Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to the November 2nd, 2017 called Work Session of the Forsyth County Board of Education. We're going to start this evening with our invocation and pledge led by Nancy Roche. Please stand as you're able.
Let us pray, each one of us, according to our individual beliefs. Lord, you are the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity and that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Amen. Please salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Tom, a second by Ann. All in favor? That is unanimous. Tonight, we're starting off with presentation and discussion on redistricting. Mr. Perkel, you want to lead us off?
Good afternoon. As you all are very much aware, we have had now two public forums, so we've received a great deal of feedback, large amounts of feedback regarding the district lines for next year at both of those public forums, as well as online feedback. The committee did not make any recommended changes to the current draft that we have. You all have requested data and information for your review all along the way, and we, as a committee, have done our best to provide you with any additional information that you have requested and tried to meet all those requests. This afternoon is an opportunity for you, as a board, to discuss your thoughts, and we're here to do our best to answer any questions that you might have, or to make any points of further clarification if you were to need those. If by chance there were to be information that you request that we would require us to go back together, then we certainly will do, will do our best to go back as soon as possible, get that for you, and send that to you for any additional information that you might need. So with that, I'll let you begin your discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Perkel. So I think as we've done this in the past, our kind of our roll of the sleeves session, as we call it, we're kind of going to go through the map, starting, I think, with the elementary changes, and then walk through any thoughts or comments that stuck out and what we need to go from there, and we'll move our way down through the county to the high school stuff after that. Does that sound good? All right. Nancy and Darla, do you want to maybe start off a little bit in that area with any specific ones that, as we went through the subdivisions?
I can address the north end, and then you can do the...
Yeah, I can add in.
Okay. I really have, I mean, I did hear a lot at the beginning, sorry, but as people realized that it was going to help Silver City so much, there's a traffic problem, there's all kinds of things up there, and I sent parents to meet with Chesta T. A lot of parents, I think, have toured, and I think they realize that, you know, sometimes it's, nobody likes change, and there's still people that don't really want to move, but I think if they realize it's to the greater good, and I really don't see any areas that, as y'all heard in the public comments, that need changing, in my opinion. And I'm talking about the, you know, 400 corridor.
I think a big, one of the big concerns was that they were afraid Chesta T. is going to be overcrowded, and I think with the projections, they're both going to be about 100 percent.
Right.
But Silver City is growing so much faster. Aren't there 700 homes are coming up?
Yes. And it's actually going to help traffic because Silver City now, you know, they're out on Highway Nine, and it's people going by fast sometimes in the morning, the car lines, and this is really taking, what, 200 and something kids out of there is really going to make a difference, so, or 300, maybe.
All right. So at the public hearing for that, we basically had two speakers that were concerned, but other than that, we even actually had someone come up and speak basically in favor or support of how wonderful Chesta T. was. So I guess with that said, do we have no proposed changes to the elementary area then?
No.
That sounds good. All right. That was quickest, I think, we've ever gotten through. Amen?
Nothing else.
That's a record. Excuse our old technology, but it's just easier for us to see bigger here. All right. Do we want to talk about some of the main topics, or do we want to just kind of start in different areas that have brought up their concerns?
Why don't we talk about different areas?
Different areas, different locations?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Well, why don't we start with, since everything, pretty much the large portion of what we're doing is the need to populate Denmark High School, why don't we start with Denmark? Because that's kind of the placeholder, and then we'll work our way south and around from there. Okay?
Sounds good. All righty. Let's see. Which one should we start with?
You may want to start with the reasoning behind not taking West students.
Ah, yes, which we, that was one of our, Mr. Perkel, do you want to address that for us? Because one of the common questions we got was, why are we not moving more people out of the Western District into Denmark, whereas a large portion is coming out of the South High School into Denmark? So we'd ask you to, if you could highlight that for us, please.
One of the things, several things we looked at with that area, one being looking into the next four to five years when opening of East High School. So we knew that if we, with that, when that high school opens, then we would have to go back and take the top portion of the West High School District to make a shift over to populate East High School. So that was one of the things we looked at. The thing, another thing that we also looked at in looking at taking, going up further north in the area from where we actually drew the line, to take some of those students down to, from west down to Denmark. And that created a feeder pattern issue that did not meet our minimum 20-80 feeder pattern. I believe it was somewhere, it was closer to a 10 percent feeder pattern when we did that. So that, basically, those things together were the things that we, that helped us make our decision in stopping the line where we did, going up into the West District.
So in other words, if we had moved some of the other subdivisions on the, in the dress of Jerry down, that would have created a 90, say, roughly 90-10 percent feeder pattern, which does not meet our minimums.
That's right.
I agree with that. I don't know if we want comments on if, to me, that's a, makes a big decision.
Well, I understand, I do understand that logic. I do. Looking forward to the future, I do, I've always supported the 100 percent feeder idea, which is what we have, the Vickery-Vickery West and the Coal Mountain North-North. I do think, and I don't want to say in defense or out of support of the people in the southern area, I do feel like we've had more of our share of the non-100 percent feeders. So I think down the road, we have to share the love, so to speak. And 100-100 percent is great, but we've got 70-30, 50-50, 80-20, and we're expected to deal with that. We don't have 100 percent. Well, actually, now we have Den, well, DeSanna, Brandywine, DeSanna, Denmark, but...
Don't you think realistically, with the way our county is laid out, that's not going to be possible, Kristin?
Everywhere, yeah.
I don't think, no, I absolutely don't think it's possible, I mean, at all, no. But I just feel like going into this, we've got areas that are being split off, that are going down, and yet we don't touch the 100 percent, and...
Well, it's not been 100 percent since inception either, because I know I was personally a part of it not being that, and that's where the feeder patterns came from. When we were working on West, we had, the Bethelview corridor was a line that we had to struggle with back and forth a lot with the last two districtings. So a very small portion would go back into Central and Otwell. We moved them there, moved them back to Otwell. So they flip-flop, they were a small feeder pattern. So there was a number of things that we learned through that, and we're trying to do it. So it hadn't been 100 percent forever. It just recently got that way.
Because we've had more students, so we can do that. So to your point, Kristin, as we grow bigger, that may occur, but I don't think ever 100 percent ever be that way.
I actually never asked, but I assume part of, another reason for not doing that, because it is now currently 100 percent feeder, but I have to assume when it is split off, that they would not be 100 percent anymore. And if we split them off now, then they would be a three-way, you know, it would even less. You following what I'm saying on there?
No, but they're, they're on the south end, so they won't, should not be affected if you take from the north end of West.
So none of the, none of the, none of the Vickery-Middle-West would end up...
At north.
At north.
It won't be, it won't be far enough north, no.
So that's not true.
So should we, we should, hopefully, we can keep that 100 percent, like we have Johns Creek, Riverwatch. Lambert is total 100 percent. If we can get to that 100 percent, that would be ideal, if we could get to that.
Say that again, that second card?
The Johns Creek, Riverwatch, Lambert, isn't that 100 percent feeder pattern there? You know, that's the southeast.
Oh, it is it?
That's the southeast.
Yeah, we have one.
And like I say, and now you have, like I say, you have Brandywine, DeSanna, Denmark. So if we could get to that, at some point, that's, that's our goal. That really would be our goal.
Because you look at the north, this is the middle school map, and if you look at, that's, all of Liberty comes way down.
Goes way down.
That's the small part. That's, that's all.
Oh, yeah, Liberty's that great, big.
Yeah, so that, that'll all shift.
Liberty goes down a lot farther. Let me just put it up. Actually, I got it right here. All right. Well, I think you see my point, though. I just feel like we're holding on to that 100 percent there when the South High area is not getting that luxury, so to speak. So I did read through some of the, as I sat in soccer in the dark last night when my computer read through some more of the online comments, and the first time I read through, I picked up more of the concerns, for whatever reasons, and I was reading through last night, and I was, some of the positive ones stuck out to me more. Some of the people in Traditions, Ashford Manor were excited about the new school. It was kind of nice to see that, I have to say. So I don't know if I just didn't notice some of the positive ones as much as I was focusing on the concerns, but...
That's all the ones down 141, so they'll just...
Well, actually, those are the ones on Highway Nine.
Yeah, I meant the Highway Nine.
I think when they went to Midway and they knew that they were going to be moving on, I think they already, they had that time to come around to the idea that they were going to a new, brand-new school. So is there anything there for on the, what I'll call the northern blue edge that we want to look at, or is that, Tom?
No.
So we are going with the staff recommendation that we can't bring any more of that down due to the, basically primarily the split to east and the feeder pattern percentage it would create.
Right.
Okay. All right. Moving down from there. I'm just trying to look at the ones that stuck out in my mind. Feel free to pipe in if there's ones that...
Do you want to move to east?
I think there's, I guess, pretty much east, because there's the southern border along the line, the blue line, and then there's the, the Shiloh, Stony area.
One thing I would like to say, just in general, that we've gotten a lot of discussion about, that our numbers aren't correct, aren't correct, aren't correct. And I know Tim has been doing this for 18 years that I've been on the board, and he's been within 1 percent of a lot of the numbers. In fact, I looked at, there was even a speaker the other night that fought against going to Shiloh, and they admitted that our numbers were actually correct. Because Brandywine was predicted to be at 1,021, it's now at 1,100. This is the second year. DeSanna was predicted 779, it's now 850, again, the second year. So like I say, I have to go, and a lot of the numbers you see online, there's a lot, there's a lot more that goes into it, because I came up with a chart with numbers to make it a little more logical for myself to work with, just in line. So I sent it to Tim, I said, is this reasonable? And he said, yes, but then he started going into different things that affected the numbers that I didn't take into consideration, like 50 more rising ninth graders from going to Alliance Academy each year from different high schools, the promotion factor, some eighth graders don't get promoted, the retention factor, the move on when ready, early graduation, dropout. So it really, like I say, it really, there's a lot of things that go into the numbers. And all his numbers are projected numbers, they're not actual numbers. So I can't use actual numbers that have been given by a lot of people versus projected. I've got a, myself, this is myself speaking, is I have to use Tim's numbers that are all projected, so I can compare apples to apples. So that's what I've done. I've come up with numbers. If you hear numbers, like I say, they're not going to be exactly correct. I have done projections for Denmark going out for the next five or six years. I've used a 10 percent growth rate, which Tim said was too high, and it usually goes down a little bit as you go along. But I also did research, and when Lambert opened, it opened at 1,387. It grew, it grew 9.8 percent that second year after the seniors were back in there. So again, that's why I use 10 percent. They, within five years, were full, and if you look at Denmark, it's going to take at least six years to get to over 2,500 at the 10 percent growth rate. So again, I gave the, I gave the, I guess, the side to the constituents that have been saying that they were really concerned, that there's so many houses out there that we're not counting, and we, I just really feel we really are, and I just really have to go with Tim Emerson's numbers. So anything I said will be based on those projected numbers that he has given us.
And at the end of the day, the numbers give us that metric that we try to use to open the school. We've opened two high schools since I've been on the board, and it's very hard. We learned a lot after the first one, when we opened West and then Lambert, how that goes about and what it looks like to open a high school. There's a lot of, we understand there's a lot of new pain to come in, and so the funding has changed. We've added funding to opening a new school to make sure most of the programs are there in their entirety. There's all other kind of rules, whether it's GSHA, that we don't even hardly consider, but affect the school and how it's set up. So we use these numbers strictly as our guide and guiding metrics that we use to know where we're at. So when we talk about numbers, that's the reason we use the numbers.
To add on what Nancy said, I mostly agree with what you're saying. I think you're referring to back when we were doing DeSanna, Mr. Sauter, who got up and spoke last week. And I have to agree that we both, and I fought for DeSanna, some of the lines we moved, because I thought the numbers were going to come in faster, and I look to admit, like him, I was wrong. It didn't come in as fast, because you never know. It was zoned, and it was coming out, and it didn't come in that first year. It is coming, but that's the same situation we are with the Denmark area, although I think, in their defense, I do think those areas are coming up, they literally are coming up now, where the DeSanna was not quite there then. So quite for and against, when Tim, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Emerson, when you're, when he's doing the projections for the study areas, or in general, the study areas include a percent of growth, which is not necessarily just for that, say, we'll call it a subdivision, but it's a general number that's used based on long-term growth over time. So his projections are increased for any given area, but that kind of takes into account another area that might be coming out of the ground, so to speak. That's where that growth ultimately comes from. So your 7 percent growth, 7-point, whatever it really has been in the south area versus 4 percent at Lambert, accounts for that. However, I do think they have come up with some neighborhoods that may have not, that are coming out of the ground, and I look at the metro study data for these particular subdivisions, and we're looking at Ashford Manor, Blackwell, in Central Park, that are halfway, a third of the way out of the ground, and I wonder, I would like to, after looking at their numbers again today, thank you, Ms. Thompson, if you're out there, I can't see, they've been doing a lot of work, and so I just would like to confirm those numbers one more time. I do think your projections at 7 percent help cover for that growth, but I would really like to double-check and make sure that those numbers are accurate, which is something, I just kind of got this, like, 2 o'clock this afternoon, so I would really like to do a little more work on that. But I do think that Tim's numbers are pretty darn close, but there's so much coming out of, did you know what I'm talking about, Tim?
Yeah. And again, like I said, we build a, you know, we look at the historical trends of what's happened with high school growth from year to year. We look at that to project forwards based on that trend. And of course, we take that percentage growth, we apply it to everything that is South Forsyth High School. So that's all the area that's being moved to Denmark High School currently. That's the 7.4 percent we've kind of been working towards, or a lot of the growth area. Now, we can't apply growth to a lot that doesn't exist. So if we, if the Davis demographic system's trying to add a percentage number, if it's a study area that a new subdivision's coming into, it cannot calculate a percentage on top of zero, per se, just because there's a new subdivision coming. So until we have some population of students there, as you said, with those subdivisions, you mentioned Long Mole Next, yeah, they're about half done. So, yeah, they get the same percentage rate, but it's not going to really equate that. But a subdivision next door to that that is full, yes, we may have a percentage applied to that subdivision averaging across the board, though, for that study area, is where we're looking to make up those numbers.
So if it's, I'm just, I'm trying to make sure I understand. So if it's one of these ones like Ashville, Blackwell, that's, all the phases are not yet complete, we'll have 20 some, so we have 20 students in there now, is that 20 in that study area count and, or not yet?
Well, say we count those 20 students in those 100 homes at this time, or 100 future homes. So there's 20 homes complete, there's 100 more left to come onboard. We cannot go into each study area and manipulate that growth factor to affect just that incomplete subdivision or future subdivision.
So it's a growth only on what's there?
So it's, it's a growth across the entire school district, is how the system applies it. So each study area gets the same amount of growth across that, to bring our numbers from, you know, 3,400 for South up to 3,700 students. And so that growth percentage, get from that number to that number, everything in South High School is applied to all the study areas. Now, and again, like I said, if we move large blocks, as we have done with Denmark, we're taking the average of those growth numbers over. Now, it may not be just to one particular subdivision that's been there, but those numbers account for the subdivision that's coming, you know, being constructed up the street.
So the percent growth in that one study area could be accommodating for what is in process somewhere else? Is that kind of what you're saying? If I'm getting that right?
For instance, we have, you know, subdivisions that have no homes on it, and there's no way to start a growth projection for zero homes to grow any in that subdivision, in that area. The Davis demographic does not see that student data point to know that there's a multiplication of students in that study area if it's not been built yet.
So there's nothing. All right. So again, I'm just trying to get it in my brain. So if they're partially, if they have kid, if there's, phase one is done, and there's 10 kids, is that number of 10 students actually in our current study areas?
Yes. Once, once they're enrolled in school and...
Even if they're...
The way the system works is Ryan takes all those address points, goes to our student information database, and matches each of the students currently enrolled in school to that address point.
And this is current, as of, pretty recently, correct?
Yeah. Your data pool was May?
May, usually.
Yeah. Because we had it built over the summer, so we began the process into July 1st of August.
Okay.
And our mobility has increased a little bit, right? With the increase level, but it's still not significant enough to really impact.
And that is one of the things, we, there is a factor in the Davis demographics that looks at mobility, has birth rate data, and that's, of course, impossible for us to try to ascertain. If somebody has a child in New Jersey and moves to Coming, Georgia, it's hard to pick up that as a birth rate move. So it's real hard to calculate in the system. We really don't use that. But mobility is where we can see that these study areas declined and then coming back up. We've seen that Johns Creek was a good example, where we saw some of that happen in the Johns Creek pocket, that they were starting to slide off, and then their numbers moved back up.
So it's a complex figure. We add that into it. There's a lot of pieces and parts to this. To come up with, again, it's a metric, and it's a metric we use to try to keep the schools at the levels they need to be to run the school business, if you would, and try to make decisions based on some of them.
And again, it's, it's one of those things, you don't really just drill down to each individual study areas, and sometimes we break them up as the numbers become too large to manage. You don't want to be moving a whole block of 100 students in a study area. So you want that to be a smaller, manageable number, or else, you know, you just move one study area and boom, that happens.
Yeah.
So that's why we have A, B, C, D study areas, as we have to break those up. Then we have some study areas that can cover, you know, a couple square miles by the time you get 10 students in that.
Yeah, we changed study areas so many times.
Right, when we first started this, I'll remember that.
It's a regular event.
And there's things, you know, the natural areas like creeks that you can't cross for, you know, two miles, you know, like James Creek, where it divides James Burgess Road from Windermere Parkway. That's a natural divide, so we have all those study areas based on that natural divide as we go along.
So it's geographic also?
Some of it's geographic, yeah. Like I said, there's no road to get from James Burgess Road to Windermere Parkway. We don't have students from Windermere Parkway going to Riverwatch and Settlers Bridge. It's just not, they can do some travel pattern. So that's why those study areas are separated from each other.
All right. All right. I think that's it for now. I'll go far. We never know anymore. Well, go ahead.
I was just wondering if we could talk a little bit about the numbers. I did this question on that. Did you bring, did you make a copy of it? Do you need a copy?
Yeah, because I think we need to talk, we need to talk.
Go through one.
Where it's starting, and we subtract it out, why a small subdivision, why, I want to talk, yeah, let's talk through the numbers.
First of all, on your, online, we had the redistricting plan summary, and if you, if you looked at Denmark, you said, okay, we're going to end up 70 percent full with 1,750 kids. Well, that's really, all these numbers, and say, West ends up at 2405, all the numbers have seniors still in that, in that projection. So what I did is I took the 1750.
Everybody, actually, right.
All of them do, all, yeah, all, Denmark South, Lambert West. I took them all. In the 1750, I took out the Denmark seniors, because none of the seniors from Den, I mean, coming from, coming from South and coming from West is what I meant. I've got it listed as Denmark seniors. There's 375 of those. And then IB Pathways and Siblings, I, again, use a pretty low number. I used only 75, because I'm trying to keep Denmark at 1,300 kids opening, because again, for their programs, everything. I'm just afraid we may even go under that, because I think IB Pathways and Siblings may be more than 75 kids. I really am, I really do. I think...
So where did you come up with 75?
I, that was just a guess, because I wanted to keep Denmark at 1,300 students. That was my goal, is to keep, that's the only reason I used 75.
So and the 1,300 is really what we've been talking about, that 16, 1700 number? That's the artificial number of everybody staying back, so that the real number, after you subtract, is in the 13?
Right.
Okay.
And it can't really get lower than that.
Right. If we get lower than that. But that's why, that's why we've got such a big area for Denmark. And again, as I was talking about before, I used a 10 percent growth wa, rate, and it took till the sixth year to get over the population of 2,500. So if you look at 2018, if we get 1,300 at Denmark, see, South is going to keep their seniors, Lambert is going to keep their seniors, West will keep their seniors, plus Siblings, all that. You've got all 300 high schools that are still overcapacity. You've got South, a couple hundred overcapacity, you have Lambert over, you have what? You have all three over with Denmark at, hopefully, 1,300 students. So that's why, when we talk about this area, that's why it is so big, and that's why it's so crucial, because I don't think we can slight those students that are going to Denmark and not give them the opportunities that they would have if they stayed at a different high school.
Dr. Burden or Mr. Perkel, would you like to elaborate on the need to have Denmark at a certain level?
I don't know if I could have said it any better than she did.
Well, not so much the numbers, but I mean, why that is so imperative for the staffing, et cetera. Mr. Perkel, you're hiding, I can see you. Just...
I'm happy to be Heather, because Heather's definitely telling you, I'm sure.
A lot of people made, we can get into the details on a little bit, but if it gets done, starting at 1,300 is our, ending up being our base, why would 4 students here, 13 students here, 77 here? Can you explain why going below that is really going to be challenging?
Well, I mean, once you go, when you start going below that, it's going to cost, it's going to cost the district more in, in resources to, to staff that school. And for example, I mean, we want to make sure that, and I said this earlier, that we want to make sure that Denmark High School has the programs, the extracurricular activities, all of those kinds of experiences that high school kids can be involved in. We want that high school to be able to offer those same kind of experiences and programs and activities that are as comparable to our other high schools as possible. We know that it's going to be a little bit different with 13 versus 3,000, but still, we want them to have the same experiences. So when you have, when, it's just like, when you, when you have the number, that if it gets too low, then obviously you don't have, you know, if you've got four kids who can, who want to participate in some program, and then we've got to staff that program, or we either have to say to those four kids, well, too bad, we don't have that program. We've had to do a little bit of that in the past, but I think we've gotten better with it, with, when we've opened middle school, it's not, that's not as big of an issue, obviously, with elementary, as it is with high school. But we did get in that, that a little bit in years past with opening a middle school, when we opened that below, that number, we try to keep that at least 700, or if we can go above 750 is even better. But there, again, then you can't, you know, they can't have the same, they can't have the same exploratory type activities that the other middle schoolers have. So it's that same concept, and so that's basically the reason that we want to keep the numbers as high as we possibly can to open Denmark, just that we give those people, those students, the same opportunities. The staffing is, becomes, when you get a really, really low number, if you, especially in a high school, if you, if Dr. Salom just a lot staff based on number of students, that's not going to work for a high school when you're really trying to create some programs and to have, make sure that they have those programs. So you got to have the staff there when you may not have the numbers of kids that you need to have. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the one thing I've learned, too, is that the staff is something we also have And the one thing, yeah, the one thing I've learned too is that the staff is something we also have to consider. You know, that's one thing we've really learned in that, and being in HR, I've, I've dealt with this, you know, employee engagement. Um, that's one thing that makes us great. It, while the students are doing great, a lot of it's reasoning, the teachers are great. And to attract those good teachers, we have to have a situation where they wanna come or stay. So we have to look both at the school that's sending kids away and that's decreasing in numbers, as well as the one that's coming up brand new where there's opportunity. So there's different levels of, of employment, if you would, for those teachers and coming about. So we have to kinda keep that in consideration as well. That's part of this whole metric that we use. Um, you know, not depersonalizing it at all, because we, really, one of our goals is to keep our human capital, um, engagement high. And we test that and seek that so that our teachers are the best they can be.
Well, the teachers, some will be coming from South and West, will be populating Denmark, so there's that carryover. But in your, we also had the experience with Central. When we did redistrict for West and all, the numbers got so low and the economy tanked, and it hurt the, the curriculum and the quality of everything that went on at Central, and we don't wanna see that happen. But you're talking, like, the juniors that would be moving to Denmark, they may want a higher level AP class, and if you don't have enough students and only one or two, then it doesn't make sense. So there are lots of staff problems.
About, if this is enough. Right, I mean, 'cause I do wanna make sure that Denmark does have everything, everybody, you know,
Right.
That it's fair for those kids, 'cause it's not fair to ask juniors to move, even though they do get to be like seniors two years, but they should be able to take the classes you're talking about.
Right, and have the same opportunities.
And to kinda explain what Anne was saying, I've always thought that if you don't have enough students, you might have AP Calc, for example. But I know when my daughter was a senior and even a junior, you get to the end and you need to schedule those last couple of classes. And if there's only one offering of AP Calc and you have to take AP Lit and they conflict, that's a problem. So I, if I'm wrong, correct me, that if you don't have enough students, therefore you might not have enough sessions. It's like going to college, and then you can't make your schedule work, and the seniors are, they have to
Right, it can become a scheduling issue, right.
So that, to me, is one of the bigger reasons why you have to have a certain level. So you have enough, not just one class, but two or whatever it takes to satisfy the need.
Right.
Okay.
All right, I think we get the numbers. So thirteen hundred is really our bare minimum?
I did do the following year, you've got fo- five hundred and forty-two eighth graders coming in. Again, that's a number that was, it's a proj- a projected number.
For Denmark.
For Denmark, so you'd be at eighteen forty-two. Again, possibly lower because you'll have some retention, you'll have different things going on. You'll still have some people staying at their
And it's comforting to know that there are some new areas that we're hoping that will help populate that. We hope the economy doesn't tank, that, you know, the tax reform comes out, everything happens in the economy. 'Cause I know we just announced the new Fed chair. So there's all kinda things happening in this world we live in. And, you know, we're hoping those things come about because that'll add to this, to really firm it up. This is our minimum.
The fact of it, about out of districts. Could be, that's a pie in the sky number though, right?
That's from, that's from his charts, that's from his
Yeah, but some of those will be siblings that stay back down the road.
Probably again be a lower number. I tried to just go on the higher side, just giving, giving Denmark the, you know, the advantage that it's going to be higher. And out of districts, I've been asked that, and I said, yes, they will be taking out of districts because veterinary science is gonna be there, there's gonna be some unusual offering at Denmark, and they will be taking out of districts.
Well, that was one of the points, that, that Stony Point people are making, that, that will add more students into Denmark. We, it's, unfortunately, since out of districts don't start till December,
Right.
we have no idea to know how many that's gonna be. I wish we knew, but there's no way to know that at this time when we need to know.
Right, we have to know to have enough students next year, not the next year, if you know what I mean.
Right, right.
We can't wait until that's the law.
Right.
You can't do that.
All right, um, I know we wanna move past this, but I just can't quite yet, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just, I don't know if y'all remember the map, one of our Stony Point maps. I think they made a valid case that they were trying to pull out subd- I'll do it this way, subdivisions that were not districted, they were not, the feeder pattern was not DeSana, so I think that was part of the reason why they started with Provence, Ravens Ridge, Stony Point, Gables, Ravenswood, Fairfield, and Creekstone. Um, and their numbers being, their grand total numbers at the time were one hundred and sixty-three. And it's hard, I think, one thing we have made the statement is we can't skip a neighborhood to keep a neighborhood. So for example, I think, stepping back at the big picture, I think Creekstone, Fairfield Farms has made, regardless of the other subdivisions, has them alone made a very good case that they are right across the street. And I, I gotta speak in defense of this whole neighborhood. I have literally had to defend, excuse me, people who don't even live in this area. I'm sorry, but I, people just like sit there and they say, they're complaining.
And, um, it's really hard because I've met with a lot of the people too, and I, I feel for them, I really do. But I, you have to look at the big picture and have to say, I cannot, I just cannot bring myself to bring Denmark down to a lower number than that thirteen hundred because I really feel it's going to be lower than that already because I've really given as much advantage as I can in my numbers to Denmark. Really just seniors and only seventy-five siblings. And if you're moving over twelve hundred kids out of South, I think there's gonna be more siblings and pathways and IB than seventy-five kids. So I think we'll be below the thirteen hundred. And let me tell you, I've struggled on it, I've struggled with it, just like Kristen's. We've gone into this data, we've met with the committee many, many times, numerous times, all of us have. We've just, we've gone over and over and over, and, and right now, if we agree that we, we don't wanna take people out of West and create a new feeder pattern and, and ruin that hundred percent, and, and people, people complaining 'cause the world's like with pie in the sky thinking about east, well, we get complaints if we plan for the future like we are now, and then we get complaints because, well, don't worry about that, 'cause that's in the future. So it's, it's really a tough job 'cause you can't win, 'cause people get mad at you no matter what you do. And I think we have to plan for the future. We always have, we're working on the five-year facilities plan right now. We need another new high school, we need two elementaries, we need a middle school. So there's a lot going on that's counting. We just have to look at the big picture, and like I say, I feel for them too, I really do. I have the opposite problem. I got moved, you know, I'm, I'm almost ten miles away, where our subdivision is from a high school now. So, you know, I've got the opposite problem. We got moved even farther away. We were, we were closer to seven and now we're ten. So, and I had to vote for that last time because it was the right thing to do for the county because there was seven hundred empty seats at Central, and North was overcrowded. So there's a lot of tough decisions that we have to deal with. It's, it's not an easy thing, it's emotional, it really is, it gets to us. We've gotten to know some of you, we really have. We feel like very well, and we, we, one of our beliefs is change creates opportunities, and I think you as parents are gonna have to bring that home to your family. Whatever decision we come to in the end is you gotta make this a positive experience, you really do. Because, like I say, it's not easy, it's not easy to make these decisions, but we're doing the best we can.
Thank, I guess the point that I'm not well making, and thank Nancy for filling in for me there. I've had more than one person that does not live in the southern end come up and say, oh, we hear that this subdivision or this subdivision doesn't wanna move. And I think they don't live here and they don't know. And yes, we're gonna have to move a lot of these, and, and that's because we have to look at the bigger picture. But I don't think there's anybody that's presented anything to us that was wrong. Um, I totally agree with all their points, I really do, in almost every case. So to those who don't live down here, um, you don't know what it's like, 'cause this is their kids, so. So while I don't like it, I do agree that the numbers, when you add up, it's hard, how do you pick? You can't pick Creekstone without at, at least taking Fairfield Farms. And then if you take them, you really need to take Ravenswood and Gables. So if you add that up, that's already almost a hundred. And then where do you stop? You go to Ravenswood, you go to Stony Point, you go to Provence. I just, the numbers unfortunately do not work for Denmark.
They just, they really don't.
It's really difficult.
Any of them.
I just, we, when we were meeting the other day, I made the, if you, if you look at the map, I don't wanna make light of it, but I said eventually if we take anymore out of South High, South High won't even be in its, in its own district. I mean, it has gotten to that point, so, um, someday this has to work its way back, which I think in some ways is worse, 'cause then we move people back.
And to the previous point I made, we can't pick where these schools go. We try to, but, you know, at the end of the day, we have to build the land where we get it and build them, and then we have populate them, which is hard.
Well, Southland was bought in the nineteen eighties.
Yeah.
So
Yeah.
Yeah, and actually, that is one point I do, I wanna talk about. Denmark High School, we've been asked, why did you pick that? Why did you build it there? It's not a convenient spot, and yes, it is, it's a challenging area, but today, there is, yeah, there will be growth, but there's reasons why we build when we have to build. To build a high school, we really need a minimum of about a hundred acre, a hundred acres. To find a hundred acres, contiguous acres in South Forsyth is near impossible because it's almost built out. There are a few parcels that are close, so much less. They either have streams, they are next to a catastrophic flood zone because of the Beaufort Dam, they are next to a blasting zone because of two quarries, they're next to a power station. So unfortunately, we picked the best land, the land we did buy for Denmark, kudos to our staff, is a beautiful piece of property. It's over a hundred acres. And even if we find something in South Forsyth, that's usually not affordable. The land along one forty-one is going in the two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars an acre, and that's just beyond our taxpayer dollar price range. So Denmark is a beautiful piece of property, it's been, from our construction point of view, one of the nicest ones to work on. So that is the land we got, and that's, that's what we have to work with. So if people wanna know why we bought that, that's why we did. All right, um, so looking at the Denmark zone.
I'd like to talk a little bit about
More about Caney and Old Alfreda area, hello?
Yes, that's where I was.
Anything more on the Stony Point area?
I think that Glen, uh, Glenmore, um, again, they're right on the line, which is so difficult.
Those are the hard ones.
Those are the really hard ones.
The lines are always the places we have to look.
And, uh, I did, it's six point six miles, but as we know, going through two-lane roads and a difficult intersection with McFarland and all, it's very, it's not an easy trip, I understand that. We also have, it goes from Brookwood Elementary to Piney, and Piney is twenty-four percent right now, uh, moving on to Denmark. I wrote that down, wrote that down, right?
That one Glenmore? I think Glenmore did make a good
You'd have to move others, Caney Estates, all off Caney Road. Um, I think you'd have to kind of keep, keep them more together, and you just couldn't keep just Glenmore, just the one subdivision. I think we got, there's, you know, all of them down there, I don't think anybody wants to move. I think we've got the same argument we probably go back to is that thirteen hundred number is just so low, and that's why they had to keep going that far down.
Well, I think Glenmore's point was, Mr. Smith was well spoken, was the challenge is now they're understandably the third high school, a high school are now going to be the third farthest one away from them. I know I've always been strict on out of districts, but for this area where they have their elementary at Brookwood and their middle at Piney, and now they're in Denmark, their parents are going all over the place. And I think when we really start looking at out of districts, that we might have to look really at a case by case and see if this is just logistically not possible for some people because they're going in two different directions. And you can't literally drop off and volunteer and drop off and volunteer, so, um, I think that
And like I say, I sympathize with that area, 'cause again, where I live, when we had to move our area back to Central, we've created a pattern, and it's actually twenty-nine point five miles round trip if I would have to go from my house to the elementary, to the high school, to the middle school and home again. I hate creating that, and I, we're not creating, it's not quite that far because it's six point six to Denmark, I know, and Piney, but it's still, it's still quite a ways. I know I did one, couple of areas down, um, even, even more south of the Brookwood area, and I could not get, you know, higher than twenty-two, I think, from Brookwood to Denmark to South Middle and then home, it's twenty-two point four.
Well, you get down into Deer Lake and you're talking eleven miles.
Right, you're talking a lo- a lot if you get way down the southern end. So like I say, I hate that, that's why I sympathize with them because I hate where, where we are in creating that pattern that is such. It's hard, but like I say, you, you do make a plan. I had three kids and we opened Chattahoochee, I had a sixth grader at Outwell, I had an eighth grader go to North Middle because that was the right thing. I mean, sixth grader go to North Middle, one to stay at Outwell, and we opened North Side High, more as North Side High School the next year, and we didn't know enough, we opened with seniors, and we had thirteen seniors in that, that year. So my husband traveled five days a week all the time, so you, you do make a plan, you adjust your life, and it's hard. But I was just involved, our kids were just as involved as, as all the other ones. So like I say, you set your priorities is what you do. Sometimes you can't do everything, and I feel for it, but I certainly, certainly understand, even not living down there, I certainly understand redistricting, 'cause my family has been through it many times, opening all those new schools.
All right, so as far as Denmark, do we have any suggested or proposed changes for any subdivisions to not stay in the proposed Denmark area?
No. I think it needs to stay like it is. And if there is a chance, Kristen, with the redistricting, but I think we have to be very, very careful not to get, let that take over and so the numbers are down.
I am still gonna work on just reviewing those numbers for those new subdivisions, just as a follow-up, um, just as, to make sure. All right, let's see, I've gotta organize my papers here for a moment, let me just. Do we wanna touch on, we've skipped Wildbrook, do we wanna talk about Wildbrook at all, or from up along Reagan?
Oh, right up here.
Wildbrook, anybody want?
Again, if you did that, you'd, that's the whole area with, with Creekstone, you'd have to, yeah, if you took that, you'd
Well, they open on the other side, but
Yeah, they're here, yeah.
Yeah.
We added these in.
The valid point that the road's not there yet. I meant to ask, again, to get an update on when that's gonna be
Ask Tim about that, about that road.
Mr. Emerson, do we have a realistic projection of Ronald Reagan completion? I know that that's a few years out realistically, or?
I know, it's just the plan, I don't know when they plan a release for construction.
Again, I did have a concern, and we didn't address it, it was probably something, we had some that were very close to DeS- to Denmark and wanted to move, and it was, said they were promised even that they didn't have to move. If they moved to DeS- DeSana, they wouldn't have to go to Denmark. Well, we have a hundred, hun- hundred percent feeder pattern from Brandywine to DeSana to Denmark. So that would definitely, we, we wouldn't even probably have talked about that. It was something that was just, you know, illogical.
I do think as a separate issue, this Stony Point Road and Caney Point, Caney Road are very similar in that they are, as I say, paved the way the cows used to walk. And, uh, I think that's outside of our control, and I think that's something that we need to pressure our county commissioners as they work on the upcoming SPOLOs list to consider these roads for, or transportation plan, whatever it may end up being, those roads, regardless of, people are already driving Stony Point and Caney, and they don't work well, and they need to be reviewed. So hopefully that'll make someone's list someday that's not in our control, so. All right, let me just keep getting organized here. All right, when it came to populating Denmark, the Brookwood area came up as, as well as a discussion point. We put that topic to rest, I mean, everybody beat that one to death. We understand why that's not a good option, or shall we discuss that one more time?
The Brookwood, it's part of splitting it more, or are you talking any
People wanted to, if you look on the map, it could be logic to say, if you took the Brook, when I say Brookwood, I mean, the plantation, the preserve, the summit, Montenvo, Moncton Grove, and all those, and put them into Denmark, that would be an option to put more into Denmark and therefore possibly keep either the Stony Point area or help out through two minutes, whatever. But, um, I think there's, listening to staff and, and everyone else, there's a variety of reasons why that is not an option. One, it is just that much farther distance logistics, but also that those areas are zoned for South Middle, and they are not in Piney Grove. And then they would logistically had to switch to Piney Grove, which we just redistricted last year. We just got rid of all the trailers, and they're at capacity even for South Middle and also Riverwatch. We just added on, and they're below capacity. So removing them out of South Middle would be, take South Middle even lower than they are, and it would put Piney right back over, which is, would counteract the redistricting we did last year. So between the feeder pattern, creating a new feeder pattern, the logistics and the distance, I think those were the big, was there one other one? I think those are the big ones. And also Brookwood Way, Road is now, this week, last week started the pain of the widening that Old Atlanta Road has just almost finished. So it's now our thrill. Oh, I know, I know the reason, some of the Brookwoods have to go past, in order to get out of the subdivision, we have the traffic pattern at Daves Creek, which is a, the carpool line is a huge challenge. We have carpool line, and every single bus that leaves Brookwood Elementary, they exit and make a left in front of every carpool line, every parent, before anyone in the subdivision can exit.
Wow.
So they have, literally, and every bus has to do a left at the mercy of everyone in the car. The carpool line actually has to stop and allow the buses to go out and make a left, and then the parents. And then if anybody loses in the subdivision, they have to do that, so, and now there's the construction. And when that finishes And when that finishes, McGinnis Ferry Road will be the next one to be constructed, so there's some challenges coming. All right, so again, I think we have closed the Denmark discussion for now.
Yes.
And we need to move on to South High. All righty. Where to start?
Do you want to start down there on Mathis Airport Road?
Yeah. We definitely, this was a challenge, again, the shape of our county. When it comes to filling Lambert High School, we really have to start in the far tip of the county down by Shake Rag because they have nowhere to go other than in Gwinnett and Fulton County. So when staff start filling Lambert, that's where they begin, and they work their way up. And eventually, we had a line, and the staff used Mathis Airport Parkway pretty much as the dividing line to the southern area to fill Lambert. So we have the triangle, we call it, which is everything to the west side of Mathis Airport Parkway. That is on the edge, and also, for that matter, of course, Three Chimneys.
Well, one thing that came up later in all the discussion was Abington, the fact that it was part of Brookwood Elementary School, and the only forty kids that would not be going to Lambert or Denmark, so.
And I don't think the committee realized it right away.
But they're the only ones.
So they were trying to get down to two high schools. It would be three if Abington stays where it is and going to South.
Yeah, Ebbington's map shows it the best, that they're the only remaining.
Right.
One little spot.
So in that case, and because the kids that are south of them in the Brookwood area would be passing them going to Lambert, I think that Abington and Gates of Lubron or any other streets that exit onto Mathis Airport Road that are in South should remain in Lambert.
If you look at the numbers for Abington, they're actually, in reality, as we know, lower than that. They are, they have nine seniors and out-of-districts, so it really puts them down into the twenty-six number range.
I think we're talking-
And that doesn't include juniors at all. Gates of Lubron gets down into the, almost down to four and five, I think, when you take out the out-of-district seniors and the career pathways. So they get down to four, so the number gets down to really being in the realistic number of total, more like forty for that corridor. Because the other areas are, are single roads and are old aged subdivisions, excuse me.
And I think Tom brought it up. It's always the ones that are on that borderline that are so hard to deal with, but-
So we're talking about this little dip.
Right.
Kind of right in there, right?
Yeah.
That's where the-
Abington, and there's a-
Gates of Lubron, and there's one road, Oak Ridge.
Well, you'd have to do Gates of Lubron, Oak Ridge Farms, which is right behind Publix there. That doesn't, I don't remember.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a post-farm, I think, down there.
Those numbers are in the same study area as Lubron, I think.
Right.
And Lakeview's got-
Did you get this map?
Yeah.
This one? Tim gave us these numbers?
Yeah.
This one just, we just got this one.
Did you get this?
There it is.
Okay. Because it shows the exact, the exact area.
Can't seem to pull it out.
No, I have the one with the names on it.
That's what I-
Yeah.
I just wondered exactly where, what-
Do you want to look at mine?
Yeah, just pass it over.
Pass that down, let me look at mine, because that's some of the numbers that we're destating. Here it goes.
Yeah, Gates of Lubron ends up having four. Plus some juniors. There it is. I found it.
So instead of the seventy-one kids, it's down to forty-something. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Well, do we want to take this as a separate, so what we're looking at is amending. If we start with a mo, I guess we could start with a motion to amend the map to add those, but I'd like to discuss another area, sort of if we want to do that separately.
So I think she's got, she's got action items listed, like, so why don't we wait if we have any motions to the action part and do them all at the same time?
Okay.
Because they all kind of are, they're related. They work together, so if we work through everything.
So you want to write those study areas down?
Do we want to do it as study area? Do you want to, actually, last time we-
Well, actually, that's just everything that exits out onto Mathis Airport Road.
Well, I don't, we can't do that because Harrison Terrace, Harrison made a good case. However, if Harrison, we, Nancy, if they moved also, they would recreate the Abington situation because they go to Big Creek.
Right.
Which we didn't really think about that too recently.
So we do need to do it in study areas, the numbers, right?
Yeah, because we would recreate that scenario.
Well, we could reference this map that Tim created for us, too, so he'd know exactly.
Well, we can read it. You got it right here. I have my study area map as well.
Oh, I don't have study areas on this one.
They're no study areas.
Like I say, I think if we reference this, Tim could, Krista.
Oh, yeah, that's right. It's on the, it's on the, the one that they made us, the summary. So it would be study area three eighty-four B. We can get this one, get to the motion, but that would be Abington, Mathis Air Park and Lakeview. Study area three eighty-four C, which is no students at all right now. It's just various parcels. It's not, there's no, there's the study area, but there's no kids. And then three eighty-three B, which is Gates of Lubron and Oak Ridge, which is that one single road behind Publix.
Because I think there is a couple, two or three little houses that exit right onto the Mathis Airport Road, too, that are included in these study areas, I'm sure.
Yeah, but he's got, yeah, he's got it in here. All right, before, we'll get to the motion later, but is everybody comfortable with that?
So we got the study areas.
We do. So Mr. Emerson, you were talking about these three study areas that encompasses what we're talking about, correct?
C and three eighty-three B.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to lead into the next one that I feel strongly about, which I struggled, which is similar to Creekstone, but I think they are very similar. But I think they have a strong case, as these ones we just did on Mathis, but in a different way. I feel, and I know you all know how I feel about this, but I feel strongly that Three Chimneys should stay at Lambert for a variety of reasons. My strongest points being, which, you know, staff would not have known in the initial version that how literally close, if you look at the arrow map, and thank you, Mr. Barlog, for providing that in the earlier stages, how close they actually really are to Lambert. Their properties are literally across the street to the high school. I think another compelling reason they should stay is because they, Lambert High School shares the campus with Sharon Elementary. If I'm a parent, and I've been there, I've had a sixth grader, and I, I'm sorry, I've had an elementary school child and a high school student. And if they live in that subdivision, they're going to be driving on campus, in the entrance for Lambert, turning onto Sharon, dropping off Sharon, passing Lambert, and then be expected to drive to South High School. I just think that, while I understand why the numbers came out that way, I just feel, and this is one of those, like I talked about in the earlier meeting, the government being deep in the numbers, and we just got to be logical, and I think they are right there. They can walk through the woods easily. I've done it myself a number of times. They can walk on the brand, they live through the pain of Old Atlanta Road widening. They now have a wide sidewalk that is almost complete. They can hear the games, literally, and I know we all have heard that other sites can hear the games, but these guys really truly can. So I think for those reasons, I feel strongly that Three Chimneys should be allowed to stay at Lambert as well.
So what is your solution for South?
That's a good concern. I did struggle with that, but honestly, I also feel, I guess one of my other points I forgot to mention was this is an existing move to an existing move. Lambert is overcrowded and has been overcrowded. South is overcrowded, and both are going to remain with trailers. So we're taking these students, and we're uprooting them from trailers to trailers. And I just don't think the gain, and you know me, I'm usually the frugal one when it comes to budget. I don't think the gain of what we're gaining by losing that, the few trailers of seventy-some-odd kids. It busts maybe three trailers if you really did it that way, which is, doesn't normally equate to that. It's just not worth the gain of disrupting them. So I, it's, and I wouldn't say this if I thought it would be a real burden for Lambert to stay overcrowded. They still reduce, and they've been overcrowded, and as we all know, we've all said, we have shown with our academic success that being overcrowded does not diminish our academic achievement. So I would rather South, I mean, Lambert go down, lower in numbers, yes, absolutely, but I can't get past, if you look at this whole map, it's just pure logic. They should stay, and I just think that's, outrules all the details below it. That is how I feel. And I know, and actually, I remember when we very first saw the maps in the beginning, I remember going, you actually said, really? Creekstone, really? I mean, and again, that was before we knew all the details of why, which staff had legitimate reasons, I get and support why they had those reasons. But it's just, it's right there. You just, you can't-
So is Creekstone?
They are, and that's, they are, but they, they are.
How can you do one without the other?
It is, it is very similar. It is very similar.
In my meeting, we did figure out, I mean, you say it's insignificant, but if you figure twenty thousand dollars a trailer, it was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if you figure thirty, it was a million dollars a year that we would save.
That's two high schools losing all trailers. I'm talking just one subdivision.
That was how many, well, yeah, I mean, but that's what I'm saying. That's why it's not to stay overcrowded if you can help it.
So it's not a million dollars, though.
To get rid of as many as we can.
I agree in concept, but again, when you just look at it, the reality of it and the walkability, and it's not just to and from school, it's to and from programs before and after school. I mean, they're literally driving on the campus for two reasons, and they're going to have to drive off and go to another school.
Well, the argument there is there's already a few subdivisions that already do that, that are, that go up all the way down the road.
That leave the same campus of that school.
Yes, the subdivision's right up here. The Old Atlanta Commons, which is actually closer driveway than Three Chimneys is. You go up here, this area right here has the feeder pattern. They go to Sharon.
But they don't have the walkability that, like Gates of Lubron.
Old Atlanta Commons is one point one miles. I've done all that. I agree that, right there, right there, right there, see that, see my line there? That one, right there. And I, I agree, I looked at and questioned it myself, and I said, okay, then there's a trade-off. And so I looked at, looked at the Brookwood area, but again-
They don't, literally, the, yes, they have, there's clothes, but they're not-
I say there has to be a trade-off, because you're leaving Lambert at twenty-eight hundred, almost twenty-nine hundred students.
And they're at thirty thousand and fifty-five right now.
I know, and that's what I'm saying. You're taking almost none out. You're taking, half the students now are staying, and so we're not relieving Lambert. We're not taking kids out, and then we're putting South back down. And I, well, you guys have been on the board a long time, too, and we didn't listen to Central Office. And I've got, I select answers, I save everything. I have the map from two thousand eight, and they even went closer to Lambert than Three Chimneys. They went as close to Lambert as they could, because they said, again, moving up from the southeast corner of the county, you had to go close, as close to Lambert as you could, and keep those kids in South, or you're going to be in trouble. We didn't listen to them. Now we're in trouble. Now it's proposed we move Three Chimneys back, which is really, really hard. I've struggled with it. I really have. But I'm also struggling with not listening to Central Office, because we've done that a couple of times, and we've really messed ourselves up in a couple of really key areas. And so it's like I say, if we can't put some other kids back into South, because again, I've talked to the, the South principal has been at some committee meetings, and she's worried she's not going to have the juniors, she's going to lose a lot of juniors, because we're not letting juniors stay at South. And for her programs, again, if we don't send her some juniors and some, and some, some kids, some more kids, she's going to lose so many programs. She is just really, really worried about not having enough kids to keep South going and keep, keep the ratings and the, you know, what they've got going academically at South. So it's, like I say, I'm very, very torn to it. I'm very torn about it.
But South District is growing at over a seven percent rate, where Lambert is a more aging community.
Right, and again, if you look at futures, they're hoping, they're hoping that Lambert can stay, again, because South's going to grow, Central's going to grow, West's going to grow, North's going to grow, and all of them would be affected again in the next redistricting.
But Lambert is the least, Lambert is by far the least to come. I mean, if you look at our, in our metro study data, it looks at what's left by high school area. And if you look at, for example, future lots, two hundred and forty-eight in the Lambert district. If you look at the South, fourteen hundred and forty. If you look at the West, four thousand five hundred and seventy-nine. If you look at North, six thousand seven hundred and fifteen. And again, Lambert, two hundred and forty-eight. This is data by high school district. That's saying there is just not much left to come.
But if you leave them there, you're over three thousand kids in two years. Again, I just, I have, I really have trouble with that. I can't find somebody else to put back into South. So I need a solution if we're going to leave Three Chimneys. I need an alternative. I don't know how, you know, that's just my shit.
Well, that ship sailed a week ago, and I tried to get us to look at options, and no one wanted, everybody wanted to get to this point.
But they didn't, they don't want Brookwood going to three high schools. That's not fair either. And I looked at some of the, you know, some of the distances there. And like moving Vaughn Road, it's two point eight miles to Lambert, and it'd be five point four miles to South, and it'd be a new feeder pattern. So it's, again, three high schools. So there's arguments on both sides is the problem.
Kristin, I think we've all struggled with Three Chimneys, and we understand that. But I have just come to the conclusion, I can't, in my, not, I can't do one without the other, because Creekstone and Three Chimneys are the same problem. They're right close to each school. I can't gut South that much, because it would take them years to recover from that. And Lambert's still going to grow, even though not as much. And we've got to get to the point where we try to have twenty-five hundred kids in our high schools. Because the next time around, South is going to be redistricted again when we build the other high school. It's all going to shift again. Because we've got to shift up to Central and then back out. So I just, I can't see it. There is no other solution. I think we've all struggled with this.
I'm sorry, I just, I just, this logic prevails on this to me. I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I agree. I hate it. I know everybody hates change, and they're close, but Creekstone's close, and it's-
Creekstone's eight miles. I mean, they're right there.
Right, I know.
I mean, I agree with you. I don't see how we can, we can't, after talking to Laura, and you just can't, you know. And if Lambert grows less, then they'll just be full.
They're already, they're already full. We're leaving them full. We're leaving them over capacity.
Yeah. So that would be one less problem.
Yeah, if they don't grow. What do you mean, if Lambert doesn't grow, it'd be a good thing?
Then we just stay at capacity. I mean, we're still leaving them at capacity, right? And then what the numbers show.
Yeah, it's two hundred over. Two hundred and thirty over, without doing anything.
And even though communities get older and settled, they also sometimes recalibrate themselves. And coming from the Dunwoody area, when I was there, we were growing, and it was all a young community. And everybody said, well, it will get older, retirement community, but that's not the case. It's recreated itself. The schools are overcrowded again. And you see that in coming, in the Outwell area. That had all settled out, but now younger families are coming in. So we can't depend on just saying it's going to be an older, settled community. That just, five years from now, that may not be the case.
I guess I'm just so burned out on this.
We have to deal with the now, not, we have to think about the future, but we have to-
Well, if that's, if that's the case, that's, if that's the case. No, they're right. I'm sorry. If that's the case, then we wouldn't be not moving more people out of West into Denmark if we were dealing with the now. So I just didn't. She's right. We shouldn't, but I mean-
I may, I know what, what I was trying to say was trying to envision what a community is going to be in five or six years, if it's going to be settled or not. Following up on my comments about that.
She means Three Chimneys could change. The makeup of Three Chimneys could change. Houses can sell, people can move, things can happen.
Right, that's what I'm trying to say.
You can't go in just actual numbers. We've got to go by these projected numbers, is what I'm-
Those aging subdivisions that are not, quite frankly, starter homes, don't turn over, in my opinion. I live down there. I watch Real Estate Crazy. They don't turn out over as much as a new subdivision coming in that's, you know, putting out twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty homes a year. So they're, I do agree, yes, as homes sold, new people will come in, but I just don't think the rate is anything like a new area by any means. So, I don't know, we just, this is going to, we're going to do this again in a few years, other places, and there just has to be a logical circle around, I don't know what the size is, a mile, a mile and a half. There just has to be something, I mean.
You can't build a school right in the middle of where you need it. You can never do that. You can't just draw circles around each school.
No, but I mean, literally, look at South High.
Lambert's even going to get smaller.
It's no joke. They're not even going to be in their own district.
Neither's Lambert.
I mean, there's one subdivision across the street. I mean, there's one subdivision across the street. It's, and then what gets stays is stuff that's coming out of the ground behind them that's never even been here yet, you know, just.
Is there any other areas that we want to talk about?
There's nothing left. Well, that, well, we haven't, out of fairness, Bagley Road, you know, we should at least discuss it. They had definitely, they are established. They've been there. They have the same concerns as, well, they don't have the same situation as Abington by, of course. But, you know, I think we need to at least acknowledge that they have the same concerns as other areas. But quite frankly, they front both sides of the road, and somebody does have to move. So that, I struggle, there's just, actually, I was rereading last night the comments from the data file. And I was actually surprised when I read through the Stonegate comments. Many of them were excited about, not excited, were fine and happy with, with switching to South, but actually more of the comments were about not being, the fear of being moved out of Sharon. So I was surprised. Again, when I read the file, I was originally looking at it and hearing all the concerns and negative, but when I reread it last night, more of the positive came through. And I was surprised how many, specifically in Stonegate, were, were okay and happy with the change. So, not everybody, of course, by any means, but there were some. And that triangle's a challenge, because it's Sharon Elementary, it's Brookwood Elementary, and it's Big Creek Elementary, which adds to this.
Someday we can.
Someday.
Fix.
Not tomorrow. All right, so are there any other suggested changes to discuss? Anything else? Entertain a motion to make any potential changes to the map?
I'll make the motion that we move study area 384B, 380, uh, study area 384C, and 383B. Right? That's the three study areas. That's what y'all have listed, yes.
384B, 384C.
Leave them back at Lambert.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of moving those three study areas back into the Lambert district? That is unanimous. I would like to add an additional motion to keep Three Chimneys farm. I don't know the study area off the top of my head. Also in.
It's many, I think.
It is in Lambert High School.
I will second it from the point of discussion.
Thank you. I realize numbers are important, and again, the bottom line is, for all the reasons I've already stated, logic says they should stay in Lambert. Any more discussion? All in favor? That fails. Is, oh, I think we also wanted to discuss the rules, as we call it. Do you want to talk about that next? Anything else with the map?
Can we motion to what?
Grandfathering?
Oh, grandfathering.
Talk about grandfathering rules? Can we take a moment here to clean up papers? All right, at this point, we have, we all know the rules are, is the guidelines that have been suggested by the committee on who is grandfathered in at their existing high schools. There has been a suggestion about keeping juniors back as well, in addition to the current rules. Does anybody want to get into Darla? I know you were in the meeting when that was a, a topic of discussion. Do you want to?
And I, I thought, you know, maybe that's, that's what we should do. But then, when you talk to the principal at South that's not going to get the juniors, and, and how she feels about it, and how she feels it really will adversely affect, I feel like that, that is not something we should change now. What do y'all think?
I totally agree. I don't think you can do one without the other.
Right. Like make them go to Denmark, but not move.
Two or three times more will be moving to Denmark versus the number of juniors moving from Lambert to South.
Say that again, which one?
I think that if I'm correct, that there are two to three times more juniors that will be moving to Denmark than the number of juniors that are involved in the train, move from Lambert to South.
So in other words, if we did it for South to Denmark, they would hurt Denmark's numbers more, is what you're saying?
Right, because then do you get into the sibling thing too? So if we have seniors and siblings, and juniors and siblings, and all that, you literally, again, you're back to moving almost no one, so that's what's so hard. But again, at South, like she was saying, you probably have 350 to 400 kids, juniors, moving, because 1,335 kids are moving. So if you have that many juniors moving, you would hope they'd have a lot of opportunities at South.
Because those.
To fill in, because lots of kids are leaving. So the programs should be changing, and again, I struggle with that. But again, I.
It's just hard to swallow that a sibling, eighth grade and a future sixth grade, future, current sixth grade, gets dibs on a high school where the rising junior, who's already been invested in the CTA courses.
A sixth grader would.
Yeah, they would if they've got a right, if they keep the chain going. They do. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Oh, you have to have.
If you don't break that gap before you.
But if you had one in between. And that probably is something that we need to look at.
Very closely.
And it may, I mean, I don't want to do it this time, because we've already told people, but next time, that may need to be changed to be like, more like we do the middle school and elementary. That's right.
Mm-hmm. But then you have to make the decision. Like I did with, like I did with middle school. I kept a sixth grader.
You have to let middle school go.
I moved the sixth grader to North, and I kept the eighth grader at Otwell, because it was the best for both of them.
And where you can, you can do that. You can either decide I'm going to move them, or you can say this is the best. But I don't think we can change that now.
Why? I mean, we were considering changing some other stuff. Why can't we change that now?
Well. What do y'all think?
I've struggled chang, making a change at this point, but I really find it hard to keep, keep, the kids have not had their foot in the door. A sibling of a sibling of a sibling.
Let them stay one year.
Versus a junior, we're going to force a junior out. I just, I just, it doesn't make sense, again.
I mean, I, I agree with what you're saying too about.
I agree.
An eighth grader or a seventh grader that's never been in, and we're making somebody else move that's been there a year or two, I agree.
So.
I make a motion to that effect.
Can we restate the motion?
Can you, let's.
How do we want to word that? Move that, the sixth gr, how do you, how do you word that?
An upcoming freshman could stay one year if they are sibling? But then if you have a sibling that's a junior or sophomore.
Which may be a fewer thing, but the sibling of a sibling is, is a stretch.
Looks like Jeff wants to.
I tell you what we could do, is we, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say.
I was going to say we could just wait.
Yes, if, I think we under, we understand your intent. So if you want us to come back and look at language for that particular topic, we could, we could bring that back. I mean, it's already being talked about. It'll be out in the community, because I know people will listen to this. We could bring it back to you on Tuesday with some proposed language to look at. And also maybe take a look at the potential impact as well.
Because it does seem like it should stop the eighth grade moving up and not.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just, I think that the, a junior trumps a sixth grader. I mean, it just, it's my modeling to me.
Right, yeah, that they could be grandfathered like forever into the school. With the growth we have.
Are we going to look, I mean, while the staff are looking, are we going to look at, again, I keep going back to this, but if you are, been in a CTA course, and you are, you know, been to nationals, you've been to states, and you're, you're performing. I guess, I guess that opens up the box to sports and everything, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
It's just, we, we encourage this feeder pattern, not feeder pattern, excuse me, career pathway prep in middle school, and now we're saying, never mind.
Until you have 100% feeder patterns, we're going to have to deal with this issue. And maybe it's looking at it from the curriculum standpoint. It's how do we address these issues that.
Well, I don't, I don't think you said never mind. I mean, I, I realize what you're saying, but you mean, you did recognize that this time, and, and are making exceptions for students who have cre, finished the first two years of the pathway, to allow them to finish. That's never been a topic before in the past, so.
Right.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but you didn't just dismiss it completely. I mean, you took it into consideration, students have been there for two years.
As a side note, I did think, there was a couple of things that we wanted to clarify, and there has been a lot of questions about athletes and sports programs and staying back. And there's been a lot of information, misinformation. Mr. Perkel was kind enough to write it up nice and neatly, and I have it somewhere in my stack here, but, Mr. Perkel, if you have it in your hand, or, we all have it somewhere, don't we? Can someone read off that clarification on what has been done in the past?
At Lambert, maybe because they didn't have a varsity team.
Yeah, here we go. Here it is. The question has been, what occurred in the past, in the prior high school redistrictings, I found it, Mr. Perkel, relative to athletics? And the answer is, when Lambert opened eight years ago, all sports except for football had a varsity schedule. Because of this, varsity football players had the option to stay at their existing school. Denmark will have a varsity schedule for all, all sports, including football. Thus, that's why we have not addressed anything, exemptions for sports this time.
So they'll have opportunity to play varsity.
For varsity from the get go, which I know is on the Denmark website, but it's been understandably a big question for a lot of people. So thank you for clarifying that, because I've heard all kinds of different renditions of that, and I wasn't here then, so. All right, so you're going to come back with some language?
Yeah, we'll do that for you next Tuesday.
I'm going to look at some more numbers on the west side there. Is there anything else? I don't have anything else on my, keep on my agenda. Is that, we have no executive session? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Darla, second by Tom. All in favor?